Yeah.
Ready to go.
The witching hour. Are you coming from down south there Lynn?
I am.
Hey, there's one.
I am. Oh, here, I'll show you Dave. That's the beach right there, see?
Is that a beach bum?
Well, that's my son Jack, but yes.
Glad to have you. Okay, so I'll call a meeting to order. As with all our Zoom meetings, we will open public after, we just have a very limited agenda and then we will go into code update. So after our approval of minutes, we'll open it to the public and then everyone's invited to stay, stay on if they'd like, but we won't be taking any further comments. So startup, we have a resolution seventeen twenty twenty awarding the bid for tree removal. This is from a grant that the T A B received. And we only have two bids, I believe, and the recommendation is to accept the bid from from Phillips Towntree. I think that's the gist of it, isn't it?
Yep.
Jen's on if you need her, Dave.
Eight thousand seventy-five.
Jen is on if you need her.
Okay. The one, one bit is, this is for just removal of trees. The two bids, one is eight thousand seventy-five and the other bid was fifteen thousand plus or minus. Right, it was fifteen thousand plus, I believe. So an obvious choice, I believe Lynn, or sorry, Jen is working on the, there were no bids for the pruning. So I believe Jen is looking to get some extended time on that so we can find someone to do the job because we need to have it in by, have the bids in by now. So Jen, if you'd like to comment at all, you're welcome. Nope.
You.
Okay.
I don't see her in the, on the guest list.
J L Z.
Is that her?
I see.
NYU dot U.
You just need to unmute Jen. Is that good? Oh, somehow her speaker's not working either. Okay.
Okay, I think we can continue. I think, I think that's the gist of it. I might have missed a little at the end, but the pruning part did not get, no bids ran and she was trying to get an extension on the grant deadline. So that said, I'd like to make a motion to award the bid to Phillips Towntree service in the amount of eight thousand seventy-five dollars.
Second.
Roll call.
Sorry, Mayor Morandi.
Hi.
Trustee Early.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Bellotto.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you Jen for all your work on this and the T A Bs. I'll skip over the parking for a second and go to approval of bills Lynn.
Oh, I don't have those since I wasn't there to do them.
Okay.
Did somebody cover for me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Brandon.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve batch number five seven five six in the amount of forty-eight thousand eight six eight point three seven.
A second.
Go ahead. Lynn has a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I.
And then approval of minutes, Village Board meeting, October thirteenth, two thousand twenty, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I.
And then we'll jump back to number two. Oh, there is one other one. One I'd like to make a motion to amend the letter of agreement with the chamber for the use of the opening of the visitor's center and bathrooms and extend the time of one hour. And this is for, to have a, a person, a representative on duty during that hour.
Second that.
Any further discussion on that?
Well, I did check with our insurance company and Karen said there's no issue. We don't need any adjustments there.
Okay. Just for everyone else, it's the, Jack Goldstein, who was one of the people that kind of manned the booth down at the visitor's center, requested an additional hour because the number of people and at the end of when they're having it now, there's been a long line waiting. So he thinks one more additional hour will help alleviate the problems. I guess there were some unhappy people and at least one incident of, you know, kind of a bit of an altercation, not really, I guess.
Oh, boy.
Some, some verbals going out. Anyway, he thought that this would help. So with having, as long as it's being manned, I have no problem with it. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay, thank you. So to jump back, we have the discussion on parking. I think the one thing I would just, let's see, well, one thing, I guess we'll open up Mayor's, Mayor's Park, Park along the parking again. Or we can discuss that. The Presbyterian Church will no longer be using the pavilion. So that was one reason for at least half of it being blocked off. So we didn't have to do that every week. One thing with it blocked off with the cones all the way up is it was a lot safer for people to walk, you know, with, with cars all parked there. Then the people are pushed down to the road. So I think that's something to consider. Do we want to leave the cones up and not have parking there? Whether or not that really does push people into the village, I don't know. I think, I think it'll fill up and the village is still going to be full. So.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. Thoughts on whether we should leave the cones up there for the weekends?
There been any complaints about the cones? I've had people ask me about it, but I haven't heard of any reports of.
They just.
Hasn't. The jail or anybody being annoyed by the lack of parking or anything?
People just park there. I mean, I was there, was it last weekend or the weekend before with a small group that I had, I had spoken to Larry and to Jeff and to Dave about we were going to park our cars outside the gate and advise the police that those were our cars. So it's three of them. And when I got there, there was probably a dozen cars there already, you know, with the cones, in between the cones wherever. So people just park there. I believe they get ticketed most of the time. So, so I, you know, I would take them down and just let people park there because they're, they're parking in the village anyway.
Um, is the parking, the parking monitor chalking those tires too? Does he go down and chalk those tires?
There's no time limit there. So there's no parking.
Oh, there isn't. I see.
He doesn't have to chalk them.
Well.
I think they're just getting tickets and as Larry said, doesn't make any difference. The tickets aren't expensive enough to make a difference.
No, but if people are still tar parking there, even with the cones up, I say leave the cones up, let them park and get the ticket. So we get the revenue. I mean, otherwise we don't get the revenue. So get the revenue there, you know, even if, you know, people are perfectly happy with paying the ticket, let's get the extra few bucks. Leave the cones up.
That brings up the question of a parking meter there.
Hey.
I think, I think that should be discussed with the, with the, with the, once we get the committee back together. We were not going to get that. I think we're almost, our season's almost over here or well, when we really have. I think. I don't know how far it's going to extend. I guess that's depends on the weather. I think that the big influx has just been with the, the leaves peak time this weekend should be definitely peak. So, you know, we're gonna, this week we're gonna experience the same as the last couple of weekends, but then I think it should drop off. I don't know. But I definitely think we should.
Usually it drops off like the first or second.
Of November.
Oh, I just, yeah, of November, usually first or second week in November.
I know Fran, you and Marie both went and checked out meters.
Yes.
And your findings?
Yep, we found two meters.
Okay. Very hard. Were they right out in the open?
They were right out in the open.
After an hour's drive.
One, one meter is the similar to what we have in the municipal lot, except that it has a flashing lighted start button, which would eliminate some of the complaints that we received that the meter is not visible in the dark. With the flashing start button, you hit start and the meter lights up. So that would be very good. That's one meter. The second meter that we saw, the advantage that it had is that it was very fast, much faster in terms of gathering the information necessary to pour and then issuing the ticket. So on the one hand, you have a faster meter. On the other hand, you have a lighted meter. The area that the meter would be in at Mayor's Park is probably not going to be well lit. So consideration for the lighting of the screen is important. The faster meter is about two hundred dollars Fran, more expensive?
I believe so. Yeah, it wasn't a lot. It was maybe two hundred dollars. Yeah.
Both of the meters would come from the same company that we currently use.
Okay.
And if the parking at the, at Mayor's Park continues through next year, it would be a great revenue source. In addition, one could consider extending the blacktop more to the south to get some additional parking spaces there. So that's a consideration.
Either, either meter can be set to either be by a parking space number or by a license plate number. So you can put in your plate number and then you don't have to go figure out what space number you're at. Now, the downside of that is when the police look at their phone or at their app on their phone, the plate numbers are in order. So you've got to match a plate number to a car. Whereas if it's going by space numbers, I believe the police just have a diagram and know which spaces are paid and which are not paid.
And Larry's, Larry's feedback on that is he would prefer parking by space so that it is a consistent method for both parking.
Right. I agree with that. Yeah. Okay. Well, I think we should definitely, I don't think we, I think we need to discuss that in, in the committee and come up with a big recommendation for everything. But I would agree, like, seems like if it continues that we should definitely do something there. Maybe it's just for the weekends or whatever, but yeah.
Is it possible to include new spaces and count them on the machine we already have? I mean, people would have to walk up to it, but does it have a capacity for that?
I think it can do that, Steve. I think that can be done.
I mean, we could start with that for now or something. I don't know.
It would, it would require that.
Number spots.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, it would be nice if we could have either machine take all the spaces that we have in that area.
One on the north and one on the south where it already is. Yeah, if you're going for a hike, you could, you'd go to the one in the north and on your way to the mountain. If you're going to town, you walk by the other one.
Yeah, the other, the other thing that is nice is that the function that is, would be in either meter is that you could go to the application Flobird, I think is the name of it, and ask where there is a metered parking. And Flobird will tell you here or there. I don't yet know whether or not they'll provide driving directions from your current location or whether they'll tell you, whether Flobird will tell you whether or not the, the lot is at capacity. So that's a very nice function to have on either meter.
I agree.
The other thing that I was thinking and maybe it'll be this year and it's probably too late, but is to have, we couldn't definitely man it. We don't have the manpower to, but if someone like the Lions Club was interested in, in charging twenty dollars a parking space down there and could get it together, maybe that's at least, you know, a revenue source for, for worthy causes. And they could like man, you know, the parking lot along there. And then there was mention of using Mayor's Park more, maybe a section of it for more parking next year or whenever. And maybe that should be considered. And, and if you have somebody manning it, then they could, you know, they, they, I mean, you can make, there's at least forty spots, I would say. Along the.
Where was the first place you said Lions Club could do? I didn't hear you. Where was the place you said Lions Club could possibly?
I think at Mayor's Park, if you had, you know, people with a table or whatever, and it was twenty dollars, you put some signs of twenty bucks a lot. And if they manage that.
I understand. I just didn't hear the spot you said.
Yeah.
Okay.
They, they could pull in there and, and yeah, I mean, it seems like you'd get.
Good idea.
Make eight hundred dollars. Dutch's manners, charging twenty and they're full, from what I hear.
If we were to use Mayor's Park to park or parts of Mayor's Park, could we remove gravel and remove grass and put gravel in the area where we want to make parking? So it doesn't become a wet place when it rains?
Well, I think we, I wouldn't do that. That would eliminate the use.
No, I mean, I don't mean at the ball field. I mean, like the section on the side, walking by the pavilion or maybe on the outskirts, outside of the fence of the ball field.
I don't know. Look into that or make that decision. I think if you had the open gates on the set, on the south end, if they were open and your park just backed in perpendicular to the water treatment plant, you could fit quite a few there and maybe have one more line and fit quite a few cars in there and it wouldn't, I don't think anything would get damaged. It's not really a wet area of the field and not being used at all anyway. Besides, I think two months out of the year, maybe by, by Halloween. And we could do it on weekends for sure. But I mean, if it rained or something, we don't have to use that. You could just, just don't open it.
Well, if it rains, we're not going to really need it.
Probably, yeah, exactly. Not too many people come. Yeah, yeah, definitely a good point.
So, so we don't want to try to, try to make parking, paid parking there happen quickly? I mean, I'd volunteer to take, you know, to be a parking meter reader or parking attendant there for the next whatever on the weekends. I'd volunteer to do it. So.
I don't know how, we, I mean, we'd have to run it through Larry. I, you know, I was thinking if you have cars coming there. I mean, just if they're right in that parking lot, if they pull in and somebody's got to catch them before they leave or something and
Yeah.
Put something on their, on their window.
Well, we could, you know, I'm imagining what I could do is take one of our market tents and set up one of our market tents at one end and then, and with a table and just, you know, put a big sign that says parking at Mayor's Park, open now, twenty bucks a car for whenever. And, you know, it's not that bad a walk. You just walk back and forth, notice who's parking and seems like it, like an easy job. I'd be willing to do it.
Quite a few hours.
Yeah. I mean, if, if we did it, we have to do it consistently for whatever hours we sit.
Yeah.
People start parking in the municipal lot at nine o'clock in the morning on Saturdays and Sundays. And they continue looking for parking spaces there through six, seven o'clock at night. That's probably not true for Mayor's Park, but it is true for the municipal lot.
Well, we could keep the cones up too until somebody got there and that way make sure municipal lock gets filled up first. But at twenty dollars, they'd probably go to the municipal lot anyway. But anybody hiking for several hours would rather park probably at Mayor's Park and it's very close to the trailheads.
Well, I'm willing, but I'm unemployed right now. So.
Maybe you should do it and get the money. Feel like a job.
Well.
Would sound like municipal graft a little bit, but you know.
Splitting hairs, I guess.
When are you back in action?
I will be, we're driving back. We'll be back late Saturday. So.
So maybe the following weekend. Do you have to?
Yeah, I do.
So you couldn't do it.
Shit. Sorry.
All right.
Best laid plan.
Let's keep that one though. I don't know. I don't see how the village could do it. I'd love it for the village to be able to just do twenty bucks and just, you know, this year, but uh, too late. We don't really have a lot of volunteers out there. So. Anyway, we'll see where that goes. That's one option. The other is definitely, how long do you think it would take to get meters and put them in place and to do what we have to do for that?
I got the impression that they would be very willing to do it very quickly. Let me throw out two weeks. Now, that, that requires that the village prepare. We've got to, we've got to have a spot located. You've got to have bolts put in the ground based upon the specifications of the meter. And we need to choose a spot for the meter that has abundant, abundant sunlight because there's, both are solar powered.
And then we have to have these, the whole space marked off and all the spaces numbered. So it has to all be painted off with numbers on the fence or wherever. So the people.
And we'll need signs saying municipal parking. All of that as is done at the municipal parking lot. By the way, by the way, Kathleen Foley has just volunteered to staff the parking, the Mayor's Park parking meter as long as she gets fifty percent of the take. Is that what you said Kathleen?
Sorry Kathleen.
That's, that's still worth it.
I said eighty.
All right. Well, we can talk tomorrow. If everyone's okay with that and we have someone there that's full time, we can see how it works and talk to Larry quickly. Yeah.
I don't want to spend my whole, I don't want to spend my whole weekend there, but I would help for sure.
Okay. Do you think any other volunteers could, you wrestle up? I'm not sure.
I can find some people.
I will not be here this weekend. But that's right up my alley. I could get a cooler and drink beer and just sit there all day.
Really, it is, it is not a bad gig.
A cigar out, you know?
All right. If you want to follow up, Kathleen, to get to me or tomorrow, that'd be great. We can see what we can do. We can have science made up fairly quick.
Oh, there's another hand up. Valentine.
Maggie Valentine.
Maggie. Yep. She got her hand up. I bet she wants to volunteer.
Hi, it's Dan and Maggie. I just wanted, I think the municipal parking lot's a good idea at Mayor's Park. Is that going to be every day year round? We have to worry about snow restrictions, people parking there at night, overnights and sporting events. Are we going to be charging parties that rent the pavilion? Are they going to be allowed to park for free or they're going to have to feed the meter as well? Just a little, couple of thoughts there.
We have the ability, Dan, to identify the specific dates and specific times when parking is enforced. So for example, we might want to identify Friday, Saturday, Sundays and holidays as the dates when parking is enforced.
Oh, perfect. And how do we go about getting on the parking committee?
You have to volunteer one weekend at the, at Mayor's.
Okay, my wife will jump right on that.
No.
We haven't gotten it out yet, Dan, but I'll definitely contact you. In fact, you, you guys were one of, one of the residents I was hoping would join.
Great, thank you.
Right on from me, audience.
Okay, so I guess I, you know, kind of segues into the parking committee and I just, I think I would like to keep it small. And I guess we can advertise, see what we get, what kind of responses, but I want to keep it small so we can control it. Like to have a couple of residents, Marie and I will be on it. And I've asked Jeff, the clerk, he said he would if need be. I think Jeff's got a pretty good idea of things. They're pretty level headed. So I'd like that. Jack Goldstein is also asked kind of as a rep from the, the chamber, or at least knowing what's going on on Main Street and stuff. And I think Jack would be great. So a few residents would be, be great. Maggie or Dan, if you're willing to volunteer, I would definitely put you on. So let me know.
Yeah, we're interested.
Okay, well, pick, pick, pick one of yous and, and you're on.
I'll do it with that.
And I just felt like we could, if, once we get the committee going, we could have a meeting committee where we can invite, you can invite restaurateurs or whoever to kind of come and give us their feelings on it. I don't think it's essential that they're on the committee. Definitely essential, I think, that they, you know, that they speak at the, at one of our meetings and let us know their feeling. If we're going to put parking limits somewhere, what they think is a, a good amount of time or a, you know, time that makes sense, things like that are in there. You know, how they view the whole problem. I did, I got, I did contact ICOM about the twenty eighty percent and, and then I did look through a lot of the other municipalities and all our laws have that, no matter where it is in the state, that twenty percent needs to be saved for visitors.
This is for the residential parking district.
Yeah, thank you. So we can go ahead with that. And I think we can do that. We just have to, I, I have a list of all the other municipalities and we'll just have to call them and see how they handle distributing permits. I think that's the key. How many permits you give out? I mean, there's no way you can give out two to everybody. So that means a lot of people aren't going to be happy. I just went through a number of the streets. A lot of people have driveways, actually. Some like Danny and Maggie don't have any. So, but like on High Street, almost, almost everyone has one there, I think. So there's a lot of, a lot of streets and a lot of, we have to just take a lot in consideration and go over it again.
I think we should prioritize people in, you know, who live adjacent to the business district who don't have, who don't have driveway, driveways. I think those folks should be prioritized, don't you?
No, no, sorry, sorry. The, the district that has been approved by the New York State Senate does not include Main Street. By the way, somebody is clicking something and it's. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
You stop smoking, I'll stop clicking.
No, my, my point, Marie, was not, was not Main Street that, that it was in the business district, but people who live adjacent to the business district, for example, Garden Street, people who don't have driveways but live on Garden Street would prioritize over people who live on the same street but do have a driveway.
I think, I think there are very definite regulations as to how you can give out these permits.
Oh.
And it depends on how many, how many families are in a building, whether or not you have a driveway, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I think there, you know, I think, I think people, you know, when, when everyone finds out the rules, I don't think everybody's going to be really, really happy about permits, parking permits, because they're going to, if, if everyone on High Street gets one permit and you have two cars or three cars, which a lot of people do, then they're going to have a worse problem. Right now, they can park on High Street without a problem, you know, or their driveway. So if you find out that you have two cars or three cars and you get one permit, you may be in worse shape. So that's something for the committee to, I guess when we have a public hearing, that's when we'll hear, you know, the pros and cons of that.
Well, what I was going to say, or was, was trying to say before is that I have a list of the municipalities in the state, which there's quite a few that have these, the residential parking permits. And we should contact them and see how they were able to distribute, you know, their permits.
How does it work below the tracks? It would just apply for them?
Yes. And as you're aware, very few people apply.
Right.
And so there's not been a problem giving out enough permits such that the eighty percent rule is, is not able to be in effect. The problem with the second residential parking district is that you have more, you have more apartments in buildings than, and, and single family homes with multiple cars, then you have parking spaces on the streets. And, and, and by the way, the residential parking permit system does not guarantee you a parking space. What it says is that you can park on a, a street in the residential parking permit area with a permit and you would, will not be ticketed.
So any tenants on Main Street will not have a permit. So they can't park really anyplace.
I know. That's, that is a real problem.
Yeah.
But right now, there's, right now on Main Street, there's time restrictions. So you can't just park there whenever you want and stay there anyway.
But they park on High Street where they can.
Right. If you implement the residential parking permit, then those, all the side streets would have to have hourly, you know, restrictions on them.
Right. But if I have a permit, if I have, if I have a permit, I can park on a side street, but the people on Main Street won't be able to get a permit.
Correct.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, that's, that's correct. The other thing, I mean, there's not, there's like, you know, if you go, go through the streets, there's not too many that have multi-family, you know, apartments or houses.
No, but there's people.
Church, Church Street does.
Which does?
Church.
Uh, which, which on Church? Uh, which, which on Church Street, if you go down to it, Heffernan has his own parking in the back enough for everyone, um.
But he would be entitled to two permits.
But, but maybe there's a way to distribute in which states, if you have parking for your, for how many parking spots that, you know, you don't get a permit. I, I don't know if you can do that. That's what I think we have to find out, because he doesn't need a permit.
Well, Fran doesn't need a permit either.
I don't, and I'm, I have a parking, a driveway and I'm fine, but my neighbor has three cars.
Right, and well, that's not my problem.
Other people on High Street have, who have driveways have multiple cars.
Most of them have driveways that can hold two cars though.
Well, we're not going to be able to accommodate everybody and everybody's car addiction. But if we at least set up a system so that everybody had, who doesn't have a driveway, has an equitable system by which they can park on the street without getting tickets, then, you, you know, we don't have to make it perfect, we can make it good. So.
Within the, the rules identified by the state of New York.
Of course, yes. But, you know, we can't, you know, clearly, I think people who have three cars have to understand that, you know, if you don't have a driveway and you choose to have three cars, you're going to have to figure out your own parking somehow or another. So I don't think that's unfair to them.
I think they should all park on Academy Street.
I think so. See, see now Dan and Maggie have just decided they don't want to be on the committee. We scared them off.
No, we're still here. You know, I, I grew up on, on Garden Street my whole life and parking's never really been a problem until recently. And what happens on the weekends, if we have a spot on the street, we don't want to go anywhere, because we don't want to lose that spot. And if we start enforcing parking, I don't want to have to run out like on the Fourth of July a couple of years ago and move my car every four hours because somebody was marking my tire. And, you know, these are the things we have to look at, and I think, like you said, some of the regulations may not be attractive to the committee and the committee may decide that it's not in the best interest of the residents to move forward with this parking restriction. But until we get together and, and hash, excuse me, hash out all that information, we won't know.
I, I think one of the biggest problems is that it's the, at the people that are now going hiking and the people that are going hiking, which my street already, Maria's full, full to capacity the last few weekends, which it's never been before. Those people are just parking and they're, they're going for the whole day. So, you know, there, without any kind of time restrictions, that's what I think everyone's facing. It's not, it's no benefit to the village, really. They're parking there and they're heading out for the entire day. And I, I can tell what they're doing. I mean, they have backpacks and whatever, they're not going down Main Street. Uh, so, you know, and the only way to stop that, or if you put restrictions, time restrictions on, that'll stop that. But then we get into everything else, like Dan's talking about is one, you know, one of the problems we have to address.
And even, and pre-COVID, when, uh, the commuter lot was full during the week, there would be a lot of people who would park on the side streets for ten hours a day, um, and hop on the train. And again, we, we would run into those problems, but, uh, I mean, it, it comes in waves and obviously with the, the hikers. It hasn't been bad during COVID, it's been great.
Right, as far as, uh, commuters go, that is. But the thing also is that all, all of shop owners or people working in the shops can also park right on the side, and they do, right on the side streets and they park and leave them there all day. So that's another problem. That's, that's a number of things we're going to have to go over, and if there's a way to implement that's fair, or maybe there's another way, we can contact people and see if there's another way to, um, I, I, from talking to NICOM, it didn't sound like there was any other way you could restrict parking. It's like, uh, it's public parking and, uh, you can't favor residents. I'm not sure if, if there's any way around that, or we'll just, we need to have, start digging in deep. Maybe there's a way to just restrict something to residents. I, I don't know, doesn't seem like there is. If it's public, public, public. So. Anyway, uh, you know, I, I don't know what the answer is, uh, it's, uh, but we'll, we'll work it out somehow, or go through it all again and revisit another year to. Um, I'll, I'll set up a time when we can, uh, yeah, when we can start our first meeting or look at the calendar and I'll contact people. I, I think I'd like to have one more resident on if we can, and, uh, and, and then start it up and, uh, start going over everything. I already started going over the street by street again, see how many driveways and how many people have driveways. We need to know how many, how many altogether there are, again, to just double check numbers if we still have them, if not easy enough to go. This weekend, we can do the, uh, see how many cars are on each street and how many parking spaces are available. And, uh, definitely go on Google and find out how many people have driveways.
I think you'd be surprised to notice how many people are parking and going to the train. Uh, I've always wanted to sit down there, but I just can't get up that early and watch all morning and see where people go. Uh, I think a lot of people are coming from out of town, parking on Main Street and walking to the train. I noticed that when I was working on Main Street, uh, Barbara and Brooke. A lot of people parking, I was there early and they would walk right by, they go left and they head down to the train or go into the tunnel. So if we could find a way to stick it to those people, that would be nice, because they don't want to pay to park down at the lot. Well, then they'll pay us for.
Those are the cars we should start towing when they overstay. And they come home from work at six o'clock and they don't have a car.
And it's dark out.
Yep.
It's snowing and they're like, where's my car?
Well, and you can also play with the hours that we have on our signs. If it's like nine to whatever, you can get there at a certain time and park the rest of the day and, you know, still eat up almost all that. So another thing that needs to be addressed is the, uh, times when restrictions start, I think, on Main Street. Makes sense. But then, and once you change that, that affects people that live on Main Street and they leave and how much time they have to actually, uh, use this parking areas.
Well, there's at least a way to, I mean, if you can't guarantee parking for residents and all that, because it's against the rules, at least there should be a way that police or the, the kid that writes the tickets can recognize if it's a resident's car or not. You know what I mean? Like a sticker that says.
No.
Person lives in Cold.
Can't do that.
That's the permit system.
That's not a permit.
Uh, and who's going to catch you?
They live here.
That's right. We can put a, uh, a sticker on there that says it's good for the parks and then people will see that, and it's not going to say you're entitled to anything, but with our small police force and our small village, you'll know not to give these people tickets. Is that right? Yes.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Yeah, that sounds fishy.
You're down to South Carolina.
Everything smells fishy.
Okay, um, well, I'll, I'll get it together tomorrow and check the calendar and get things going on, on the committee. And, and I, I'm just going to choose one more and kind of, and pick this one and, uh, so we can move ahead on it. So do we have any, any other comments or should we open it up? Is there anybody else that has comments? Anyone, anyone would hand it up?
I don't see any, no.
I'm trying to raise my hand, but I'm not doing it fast enough.
Kathleen.
Kathleen, yeah, um. I'm in my piles of laundry here, so pardon the piles of laundry. Um, I, I just wanted to advocate for the lighted meter. The, the meter at Riverview is really hard past, past sunset. Um, so if that's an option. I, I don't understand the logic of not having the parking spaces open right now at Mayor's Park. Since every space that isn't filled there is a space that gets pushed to a residential street.
I thinking originally, well, it started out with Presbyterian Church wanting at least half of the lot, so I wasn't going to have people, our guys taking and putting up cones all the time. Um, then we just, I'd been advocating with Richard to, uh, limit the amount of people in the parks, so one of the ways to do that, that we said was limit the parking, but, um, so opening up more parking in our village seemed to be contrary to those requests. And, uh, and then I feel like that, that's just going to fill up. And we, we can see this weekend, I'm, it's open now, so we'll see if that's, has any effect on having less people on these side streets. And I would put money on it that it's not going to have any effect whatsoever. So I think.
I think they just, they're just moving. What, so was the church using Mayor's Park for outdoor services or something? Oh, I see. I didn't understand what the connection to the.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, Presbyterian Church was using the pavilion area. They have like fif- they have a small congregation. They were using it on Sundays.
I see, I see, that makes sense. Well, it's, it's going to be interesting to keep track for the next couple of weekends. I drove to Beacon on Thursday around five. And, um, along Route Nine, and the parking was crammed all the way up from train stop, that secondary train stop that's up, um, from the trailhead. So it seems to be.
Oh, definitely.
Not my house. I don't know who's burning their hair, but that is not my house. Thank you. That was all, just advocating for the lighted meter.
Thanks Kathleen.
And thank you for this up.
One advantage of having no parking on that strip along Mayor's Park is that it gives more place for the pedestrians to walk when they're going toward Little Stony Point or, or the trailhead. Because when that is full of parking, then people are walking in the street and it makes the street, street very, very difficult to navigate out of the gate. So, so, there's a, I mean, you guys, you guys know this, but it's, it's like a trade-off, it's one or the other, so.
Your, your voice is sort of getting dropped.
All right, is that better?
No.
No.
And stalking like this.
Now you're better.
I'll just be quiet.
You're better now.
Yeah, you're better now.
No, 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 you can, you can leave it on. It was better at the end.
Oh, that's okay. Yes, okay, that's very good. It's okay.
Anyone else?
I don't see anyone.
Okay, so, thank you, everyone. Um, uh, now we'll enter into our wonderful code update review. Uh, like I said, uh, people are definitely welcome to, to stay on. Um, we're not going to take any comments right now, but there will be plenty of time in public hearing, uh, when you can make comments, so take it away. Whoever's taking it away, oops.
I guess I am, do we want to go back? Uh, I don't know. I looked over the, the information we got from Ted Fink, which I thought was very helpful, and I know Marie has started adding, um, definitions that Ted gave us. So do we want to go back to the definitions and look at what we've deducted and what we've added? And maybe that'll make sense for some of the other areas that we passed over.
Uh, as it turns out, Fran, I have a number of questions for Ted. I called him on Friday to get clarification. Uh, he called me back today to tell me that he didn't have any time today to talk to me. And so we have a conference call tomorrow. Um, so, I mean, we can go back over the changes that I've inserted, but I would say that they are not final. For, for either, um, a floor area, gross floor area, net, or net floor area, there should be no more instances of habitable or livable, uh, floor area. Uh, but, so I believe I've eliminated all habitable and livable floor area with either gross floor area or net floor area. As far as open spaces concerned, I've, um, I, I have some questions for him on that as well. Hopefully we can get those resolved tomorrow.
All right, so where we left off last time, if we want to just wait until Maria's finished with Ted, we can start at, um, section one thirty-four fifteen A, which I have my notes that says begin here with a big arrow, so I guess that's where we left off.
Yeah.
One thirty-four fifteen A.
Fifteen A is Butterfield. That's the zoning district for Butterfield.
And I, but let me just find a page. Uh, I'm on twelve.
Page thirty-seven.
Thank you. I see one for thirty-four fifteen is thirty-seven.
I know it's.
Fifteen A is down a little farther, Dave, it's, um.
Really? It's what it shows on my side.
Now, how about forty-three? It's, it's section B four, B four A. It's the Butterfield area.
Oh, B four A?
Yes.
Um, I'm looking at page forty-three.
I've got B permitted uses, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Um.
Is that it or no?
No, you got to move down. Uh, let me see. No, go down, but look, go towards one thirty-four sixteen. But it's, it's one thirty-four fifteen A. It's page forty-three. It's regulations for Zone B four A Medical and Healthcare Facility Mixed Use District.
Sorry, what was it again? Fran, my phone just went off and I couldn't show it up.
Sorry. Uh, it's page forty-three, section one thirty-four dash one five A regulations for B four A Medical and Healthcare Facility Mixed Use District.
Oh, I know what the problem is here. It's like, I have two different, uh, two different Google accounts and, uh, the one I use doesn't show that, so.
Oh, sorry. Okay. You with us?
Good, you, you can go ahead. I'll, I'll, I'll get to you.
Okay, um, all right, so we have, um, let me see, the first adjustment I see is in section A. And. Okay, that's gone. Let me just see. All right, the first line, site plan, review and approval, in each case we're a building. Um, and we took out the word use, instead of a building use, it should say a building or alteration, alteration or conversion or mixed use development is proposed in this, uh, district. So we're replacing, we're adding alteration or conversion. So instead of a case where a building use, it's a building of, uh, or alteration or conversion, uh, and I'm going to approve that. We went down, it says, um, planning board shall be authorized to determine that all requirements of this chapter have been met, including any additional requirements referenced in one thirty-four. Via footnote, Maria, we, we're taking out the four, it's not one thirty-four four, it's just, um, additional requirements referenced in one thirty-four via footnote. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're not referencing the, um, and I'm going to get rid of that dash. And then we're, we're removing, um, and standards, let me see, so we're going back, planning board shall be authorized to determine that all requirements of this chapter have been met, including any additional requirements referenced in one thirty-four via footnote, and we're, um, getting rid of the next section. Uh, and then we're saying an additional standard under one thirty-four sixteen G three for senior citizen housing in the B four A zoning district. So we're remove, we're just rewording that more or less.
Yes, and, um, there's a reference here to, it keeps jumping. There's a reference here to one thirty-four sixteen G three. Uh, one thirty-four sixteen G three, you'll see in the note to the right. Uh, one thirty-four sixteen G three lists the conditions for, uh, one thirty-four fifteen, which is just not rich. Some of those conditions do not apply to one thirty-four fifteen A. What I, we could do one of two things here. I could copy those conditions from one thirty-four sixteen G three into one fifteen A, or we can delete the reference to one thirty-four sixteen G three. Which would you prefer, prefer to do?
I am looking at one thirty-four sixteen G three, and these numbers seem to have bounced a lot. It says in PR one, commercial facilities incidental to the operation of public recreation. Is that what you're talking about?
No, this was, um, uh, special use requirements, um, which were, we do, they were deleted. Um, let me go to one thirty-four sixteen.
The things got deleted. The things got deleted and then renumbered and.
So 13416, let me see if I can find ahead of it. 13416 contained in it additional standards for, for 13415. So you would see senior citizen housing as permitted in the B4 zone.
My.
Those, those conditions were also referenced in 13415A. What I did is I moved the conditions from 13416G3 to 13415. So that 13415 contained all of the conditions for, uh, a just, the district 13415. Unfortunately, 13415A made reference to those senior citizen conditions.
And they don't really, they don't apply here anymore. Is that correct?
I'm sorry.
Do they not apply here? I see where it's all crossed out.
They, they, if, if you look at the, what was crossed out, it referred to the B4 zone. But it was referred to from the B4A zone.
Right.
In 14, 13415A. So what can be done is to copy the conditions that apply, for example, A, that condition applies and move that also into 13415A.
Yeah, I'd have to go back, Maria. And I've, I've got, I've actually printed out 134 and marked it all up so I can follow it rather than bouncing back and forth. And I still can't follow. Can we skip over this until, um?
Yeah. And it, unfortunately, this is referenced, 13416 is referenced in multiple places in, uh, 13415A. Uh, so we will come against, up against this three or four more times in 13415A.
13416 was permitted special uses. Is that, that's for all zones though, right?
13416 is for all zones. However, some of the, some of the requirements or standards that are in 13416 currently, oh, sorry, in the current code, applied to senior citizen housing.
Right.
Okay. But it specifically says in 13416G3 that it applies to B4.
Right.
And 134, 13415A is B4A and 13415A refers to 13416G as being applicable to the B4A zoning district.
Planning board shall be authorized to determine all requirements of this chapter have been met, including any additional requirements referenced in 134 standards under, there's senior citizen housing. Um, I don't, I don't know. Um.
We can come back to it. But it will, it will come up again.
Okay. All right. So we need to come back to the beginning of 13415A. If we go to.
So what's, what's the problem? Now, just to go back, I mean, I'm just looking over this quickly too. Like so, in, in 13415AA, and we're, we're first looking at this, it says reference additional requirements. Why, why can't it be additional requirements noted? And additional standards included under 13416G3?
Well.
Why, why, why are we adding the reference of footnote? Why can't it be determined that all requirements of this chapter have been met, including any additional reference in 13416G for senior citizen housing?
Right. So what was happening in 13416G is it had a whole list of requirements for senior citizen housing in 15, 13415, which is Chestnut Ridge. Rather than leave those in, in 13416G, I moved them to 13415 so that 13415, which references only Chestnut Ridge, would have the entire list of requirements and standards. I didn't realize at the time that 13415A, which is Butterfield, referred to 13416G and 13416G specifically said on that it, it was senior citizen housing in B4. It did not say senior citizen housing in B4A. If you look at the, at the requirements in 13416G for senior citizen housing, it includes things like, um, apartment size and the number of bedrooms in a unit. 13415 Chestnut Ridge is, uh, one bedroom units. 134, uh, 13415A is two bedroom units. So the reference here in 13415A to 13416G did not correctly, it, it referred to standards that did not apply to 13415A. Some of them did, but some of them did not.
I would, I would, I mean, I'm just looking over the 13416G and it's actually for senior citizen housing. Uh, to me, most of them don't, and I would almost just take that reference out. Um, additional standards, uh, under 13416G3 for senior citizen housing. Um, it doesn't look like it applies here. I mean, the, the housing in Butterfield and, uh, versus the housing in Chestnut Ridge are like totally different. Chestnut Ridge is small, the one room efficiencies, um, they shall not exceed one bathroom, uh, one bedroom. And then it talks about architectural. I, I would take the reference out and then look at them individually. If there's any one or two of them that belong to 13415A, maybe we can pull those back in.
That, that is one of the recommendations that I'm making. If you take a look, if you, if you take a look at 13416G3, it specifically references B4 and not B4A. The first one, site show for to safe and, and convenient system of drive service access, blah, blah, blah. That should apply. Artificial lighting, that should apply. Project design should apply. Location of building should apply. So dwelling units should not apply. So there are probably more that do apply than do not apply. But the, my recommendation was to repeat those that do apply into 1346, 13415A.
I think that'll make it clear. Now you, you call, you cut them out of 13416 and put them into 13415 anyway, right?
Yes.
So I would then, I mean, for the three or four that apply to this, I think it would be easier to just, uh, bullet point them down.
Okay.
I mean, that's my recommendation, uh, or my thoughts on it anyway.
I would do, you have to do to make it as simple as possible.
Well, sorry.
We're past simple as possible.
Well, I'll move them.
Okay. Uh, okay. So next on the agenda, let me just put a note here. Okay. Um, next section permitted uses, any use permitted in R1 district is permitted here. However, neither accessory apartments nor overnight accommodations are permitted in a B4A district. I'm fine with that. Anybody otherwise? Okay. That's Butterfield, uh, moving down.
This is the question on this. This is the only B4A we have it. It, can you see there ever being another? You know.
Before A, uh, let me throw this one out. Um, Marathon, Marathon.
But we're not change, we're not, we're not, we're changing that to a different MU. Was that the same?
Uh, no, it's not the same, but certainly they could come forward and ask for a variance.
Mm hmm. Or a zone change, right? Can they get a zone change?
Sure. I mean, a variance could be a variance for anything that's, that's in the code. Not to say that it would be approved, but they could ask for it.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Um, also has, as since Matt Francisco was the chair and went through all of Butterfield using this code, did he look at this and have any recommendations?
I've sent him the, the entire code probably two or three months ago. Um, it would not be inappropriate to send it to him again. The change, as I said, when we began looking at 13415A, I tried to keep the changes in 13415A to an absolute minimum because I did not want to jeopardize any of the, any of the project that was still to be completed. And I didn't want any claims that they were being picked upon.
But they already have approvals for the rest of their site. I don't think it's, it would affect them no matter what we do.
Uh, well, they don't yet have approvals for the last, uh, building.
Uh, for one, but isn't, I thought they had approval for the whole site.
Uh, they have. Sorry, the, the site. How should I say this? They, there is a general approval that there will be a building one. I believe there's a general agreement on how big building one will be. What building one contains, I think is still up for grabs.
Hmm. I don't know about that because I think they were inquiring on changing, uh, what was approved, which was, uh, from retail to, uh, you know, apartments or vice versa.
Yeah. As I, as I said, I think that it's still up for grabs as to what.
No, I think they were asking for a change, which means that they had already had approval.
Right. They can ask for a change.
I know, but that would mean that they have an approval. They don't have to ask for a change if they never had anything there that was approved. Right? I mean, the building was approved and it was approved for a certain uses.
Yes.
Anyway, uh, I just think if they, if they, if they have approvals, um, I, I, my point was that I, it would be good for Matt to take a look at, if he hasn't, just the chapter on B4A because he went through it and there must be things that maybe he should be able to identify if he has the time to say, this is where we had a problem. We shouldn't have allowed this for future, for future projects, not this one. I feel like they're locked in and maybe I'm wrong.
No, I, I, I think I, I just didn't want to do anything that would jeopardize the project or that the owner felt was being, um, that, that was, that we're being predatory.
Right. Yeah, no, I understand that. And my feeling is that he has his approvals for everything. So I don't think anything would be in jeopardy, but I understand your concern. I, I'd see me, he'd, he'd be grandfathered into whatever his approvals are.
Yeah.
You know, if he wanted changes, he would have to go to changes no matter what. So, but okay, let's carry on. If we maybe I'll, I'll talk to Matt and ask if you take a look or if he feels like he wants to take a look. But let's move ahead.
Um, considering the fact, I'm sorry, as we're going along, that, that there could be another B4A, say if Marathon decides he wants a, a area similar, this is very, very, as you know, as me, as you said, Marie geared to Butterfield. You know, it's the hospital, it's a nursing home and health related facilities, senior citizen housing up to 55. I mean, we really wrote this around him. Um, is that fair if somebody else decides they want to have a similar situation and say the Marathon property? I mean, we've, we've limited him to 55 senior citizen units. Um, you know, nursing and medical health facilities, so on and so forth. Um, it seems to be very, very strict rather than a little bit broader. Uh, and I know why it was done that way when it was done that way, but it doesn't really leave room for say Marathon to decide they want to do something similar to this. So I don't know whether, uh, I know Marathon right now is going to be what a P, uh, MU.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um.
So what would you have changed or what would you recommend be changed?
You know, I, I'm just happy to look at the next section. We're looking at the first thing that pops in my mind is senior citizen housing of up to 55 units. So if Marathon decides he wants senior citizen housing of 75 units, I know he can get a variant, so he can get a.
That's right. He, he would ask for a variance.
Decides he doesn't want, um, okay, he does. I'm sorry. Yeah. I'm, I'm looking at it almost as these things have to be there, but it's permitted. You know, the health, health related facility. Um.
If we were to, if we were to change the number of permitted units, Galara could come along and change and implement more units.
Right. I mean, he was approved for 55. Uh, so for him to come now and say, well, you changed it and I want 75, that shouldn't apply to him.
Yeah, but there's regulations, like you can't just put 55 in there and not have parking or you can't, I mean, link to everything else.
All right. If, if we were to change the wording, the substantive wording in one, in 15A, I think we open ourselves up to
What problems do we need?
A request to increase, let's just take the number of units, a request to increase the number of units. Or if we lower it, this, uh, an allegation that we are being predatory.
So I, I just, I find it strange that we're writing a whole, um, and that, you know, this is probably more just my thinking, that we're writing a whole zoning, uh, area for one development. And I know we have, we have similar with, um.
This was done, this was, this, this whole section, 15A was done X number of years ago. This is not, the, the, the changes that you see in 15A are the only ones that, that are being recommended to, to be changed, such as the gross, um, net floor area. And that was because of the debate about how do you measure floor area?
Okay.
There is.
And so my question was, is that since, you know, my, my initial question is where else would this happen? We're going over this whole thing and with a fine tuned comb, when this is the only place that it's ever going to be. And the answer to that was, well, there's Marathon. It's okay. Well, that could be changed if, if somebody or another board is willing to change that to, to B4A. Um, from MEAS MU1, they could do that. So before that's done, I, my question was, should, did Matt look at this? Because he knew the problems. He would probably be the best to ask if there were problems in this that, so if someone in the future, if somebody can, can he wants to change it and there's a board willing to change it, then then, you know, we would have, you know, have ironed out any problems that we saw, you know, that we encountered during, during the whole process with Butterfield.
Okay. And my, and my response was that Matt has, has, has been sent the entire chapter 134. Uh, I think I sent it to him two to three months ago. I can certainly send it to him again.
I would, I think the, the big thing is to concentrate on this little chapter here, which he was incredibly involved in. Just the 15A of the B4A or B4A, whatever it is, 15A.
Will do.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Shall we move on to whatever we can handle right now? I'm at, um, 15A, I'm at B permitted uses and, um, I see where there's a reference again to one on number four, there's a reference to 13416G3.
Skip over those and you guys can hash that out.
Okay. Uh, okay. So we're going to skip through, um, okay, recommended to we, all right. Um, we moved down, we just renumbered. Very good. The gross floor areas is something that had to do with Ted Finks.
I think it was once we finalized the area, all the different area things that that'll be, that'll be easy to identify. Probably gross area is going to stay, but.
Yeah, I think gross area is going to stay, but I want to make sure. That Ted agrees that I interpreted his comments correctly.
Okay, and so we're down to the bottom of page forty-four, forty-five. Prohibited uses, number two, accessory apartments and overnight accommodations are prohibited in the B4A district. That was added, that's fine. Minimum requirements, lot size, front yard usage. Okay, again, on number 10. And D10, we have adding net floor area, we're, I'm going to leave that, Marie, until you get back to Ted. Okay. So the next thing would be under E, building percentages, that also a Ted question?
Uh, some, it just jumped on me.
I'm sorry.
No, building, building percentage of lot coverage, no, that's my change.
Okay, building percentage, 25%. That holds. I don't think I want to delete that space. Okay, so we're down to F. Supplementary regulations applying to B4A medical and healthcare facility mix you supplementary regulations entrances and exits driveway shall be. You crossed out.
Yes, I believe that was John's recommendation.
Okay, so we crossed out identified, oh, just shall be identified period?
Yep.
Okay, so instead of saying locate, okay. Shall be identified, there you go. Okay, couldn't see what I was looking at. All permitted uses and all storage accessory, there too. Other than on off-street parking shall be carried on in buildings, fully enclosed on all sides, that's fine. Outloading and unloading shall be off the street and on the property. Okay, period. Okay. This is another 13416G3 in numbers F6, so I'm going to pass over that one, I'm going to pass over. Okay. All the changes in F6 or 13416G3 and so on to them passed down. All the way, okay, so we are at 13416. Which is where all the problems are. Okay. Permitted special use. This is provisions, required plan, a plan for provisions. And C expiration, a special use permit shall be deemed to authorize only one particular special use and shall expire one calendar year from the date of issuance of permit. Unless the use is begun or substantial construction is commenced. There's a big difference between unless it's begun or, and substantial construction is commenced. If I've begun it because I took one beam out, is that the same as, is that allowable?
So what you're looking at here is a special use permit.
Right.
And special use permits will be identified later on in this, in this section. The current code says that the special use permit shall expire one calendar year from the date of issuance. John recommended that, that the, the expiration not occur if the use has begun. That is, if I'm asking to, if I'm asking to operate a restaurant in an area where no restaurants are permitted, if, and I get, I, and I obtain a special use permit to do that, if I've begun the use of the restaurant within one calendar year, the, the use has begun and so.
Okay, got you.
Okay.
I, I was reading it incorrect, I was thinking the construction had begun. Okay, so unless the use has begun or the substantial construction is commenced, thank you. Okay. No permit shall be issued for, if there's existing violations. Existing violation shall not mean legally existing non-conforming use, okay. Standards applicable to all special uses. If anybody needs a, a change, holler. Okay. All applications for special use, I'm done at F procedure. All applications for special use permits shall be made to the planning board in writing. Number two, all applications for special use permit shall comply with both the special use standard says forth herein. And the site plan review requirements of 13427. Public hearing shall be held in a decision rendered.
I'm sorry, to back up for a moment. The old code identified two different boards that were authorized to issue, issue special use permits. Both the planning board and the zoning board of appeals were authorized to issue special use permits. Planning board had one set and ZBA had a second set. John's recommendation, his advice and counsel was to change this so that all special use permits are handled by one board and one board only. And so what you should see in this section is special use permits are only being reviewed by and approved by the planning board.
Got you, okay. So 13427 falls under Article 8, which is the planning board.
Yep.
Okay. Public hearing shall be held in a decision rendered in accordance with the following procedures.
And then, and here you see that it identifies the zoning board, and so this has been changed to the planning board.
Okay. Okay. Planning board shall schedule the public hearing within 60 days. Shall give public notice by publication. Every decision of the planning board, okay. Same thing in number four, where we're deleting the zoning board of appeals and replacing with planning board.
Yeah.
And, uh, let me see. Goes on, planning board may refer applications for special use to the villagers, planning, engineering, or legal consultants for review, comment, and may appoint an approval of the village board. Retain such other or additional planning consultants, engineering consultants, legal consultants, or other professionals as it deems reasonably necessary. Period. All such referrals or engagements by other consultants will be the applicants, at the applicant's expense. Okay. And at the end, we're adding number eight, all uses requiring special use permit will also require site plan approval from the planning board.
Yeah.
Let's skip over them.
That's all.
Down the C.
Down to C, off-street parking.
Sorry, you, oh, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, C, off-street parking per dwelling unit, C13417L. One space for each dwelling unit under 1,000 square, don't we have a chart of this, Marie?
Yes, we do.
So do we need to repeat it here?
And 13417L is the chart.
Okay, so why are we repeating it?
As it turns out, it's repeated in multiple sections in the code.
Okay. Okay. Alright, so in this, one space for each dwelling unit under 1,000 square feet. Gross floor, okay, the gross and so on and so forth, okay, so this is. And we're getting rid of two off-street parking spaces shall be provided on said lot for each, for the use of each dwelling unit, so that comes out, right?
Yeah.
Marinas with connected restaurants, yay, we need one of those here. Is authorized on the B1 and PR1, the planning board. Shall find, find the use as proposed would not be deleterious to or adversely affect adjacent properties. Alright, let me go back and look at what I'm talking about here.
You're talking about a special use permit for a marina. So if someone wants a marina in the village, they must apply for a special use permit.
And this planning board shall find the use as proposed would not be.
Deleterious or to adversely affect adjacent properties.
Um, I'm just looking at the way that's worded. Are we basically saying that the use, or that the planning board has to prove that isn't, it isn't deleterious or adversely affect?
The planning board in looking at the proposal needs to find that what is being proposed will not be deleterious or would not adversely affect adjacent properties.
So the following are additional standards deemed necessary. Okay, so the planning board. I just thought it was worded strange. Marinas are connect, with connected restaurants.
First of all, you're going to have to have a marina and then it's going to have to have a restaurant, so those are two things that don't exist right now. I don't know how you do, but I guess it can.
Wait, I'm looking forward to it.
I am too. Works for me, see, Lynn's at the beach, I want to be at the beach too. Following our additional standards, additional standards deemed.
Planning board shall find if the use of the property would not be. The use as proposed. If the use.
Additional standards, such structure shall, I guess it's worded the way the others are, shall have contained. Alright, I'm just going to pass, I'm sorry, unless somebody thinks it's. Okay. We'll pass. And we're taking that. The zoning board, do we take out the zoning board again here because we don't like them? Following min- minimum standards.
Is our standards for a marina.
Shall be observed lot area, 160,000 square feet, each lot shall be in such shape that is, okay. Yard setbacks, all yards. Including front, rear, and side for main buildings. No motel. From motel and restaurant, okay. Yards adjacent to right railway shall be set forth. Yards adjacent to the Hudson River may be reduced to less than 50 feet by zoning board of appeals. That comes out. Yards around buildings for accessory uses, including maintenance and sales. We're taking that out. Maybe established by the planning board, not the zoning board. Ducks floats, moorings. Okay, by the planning board. Following maximum standards shall be observed. So forth, so on, maximum outside storage, including storage of boats. Shall not exceed 20% of the lot area and shall not occupy areas.
So, so if you, if you go back to C1. C1 as says that you can have boat storage on the property occupied by a marina. Dave, I know you had concerns about what a marina would or would not include. How do you feel about boat storage for a marina?
Well, I think it was, I think they stopped doing it down at the boat club and, I mean, it just, I don't know. I can't imagine where else, where marinas are going to be.
Yeah.
Right now, the boat club, do you want broat storage there or not? The only thing that it does is just affects people's, to people's views going down through the river, through that property.
Well, another, another location for a marina for consideration is dockside.
I don't think they have the depth there.
But you, you know, that can be addressed. On the, on, well.
No, they're not going to let that happen. They're working on a whole shoreline stabily, stabilization plan that's been passed and not funded. They could always sell their property and somebody else would have it.
They'll offer it to us. Can we say, it says, maximum outside storage, including storage for boats, shall not exceed 20%. Can we have a height limit so that they're not stacking boats?
So that's in, that's in C1. Following maximum standard shall be observed, C1C, storage, including boats, 20 feet height.
Okay, is that, I'm trying to envision that. Is that too high, if somebody's stacking? I mean, they did stack boats down at the boat club over on the side and I don't know.
I don't know if they stack boats, they stack the, they stack.
Stack the decks, yeah.
The docks, right?
Okay, I mean.
I'm, I'm fine, I'm good.
Okay. Shall not exceed 20% of the water and shall not occupy areas required for yard setbacks, okay. Off-street parking entirely located on the lot.
Or where are you at, Fran? I'm kind of lost.
At, um, I just jumped.
Left parenth, lowercase d is in dog, right parenth. Right after maximum height.
It's on page 53, I believe. Off-street parking shall be entirely located on the lot. Off-street loading, all truck parking loading show, place entirely in the lot. And number three, in PR1, commercial facilities incidental to the operation of public recreation, such as refreshment stands, offices, and museums, subject to the special use. Okay, let me go back and take a look for a second.
This is a special permitted use.
Right, and we've lost track of which sheet, okay, there it is, it's on the wrong page, okay. Oh, this is the one, okay, this is the one that got me confused number and wise.
So special. Yeah, this, this is the one, yes.
Okay, so special permitted use. In a PR, you're going to have commercial facilities incidentals to the operation. Such as refreshment stands, offices, and subject to a special use permit that takes into consideration factors such as traffic, property size, and location. Okay, so that's allowed in. And then the next whole section is the one that got moved to the B4. Okay, I'm going to leave that not, I'm not going to approve taking that out yet until you go back and look at.
Yeah.
That's all, that's all the part that was moved and then we discussed if we want part of it moved to the B4A section.
Yep.
So that's all of that. Look at all the pages, we're doing well, neat. We're down to another page. Oh, that's out, that's out, that's out. Okay, can we go home now? Come on, Marie. I am, on page 57. Now, let me see, now I'm going to go back and find out what the title of this whole thing was. Okay, we're still doing special use permits, right?
Right, and this is home occupations. Special use permit for home occupations, which is at the bottom of page 57.
Right. Okay. So, okay. The intent, the purpose of these provisions is to allow home occupations and home professional offices, which, okay, remember, remember this discussion. Which are compatible with the neighborhoods in which they're allowed, so home occupations. This is all new added. The home occupation, a home professional office shall be permitted, subject to the following conditions. Does it say what zones they're permitted or did I just not, not wait? Establishment and conduct of a home occupation, a home professional shall not change the principal character, visual appearance, facade, or use of the dwelling of the unit involved. Such use shall not require.
Before you go on, the title for this is home occupations, should. Before you go on, the title for this is home occupations should be home occupations and home professional offices.
I would not complicate it. I think what people do in a home office is still a home occupation. That seems pretty clear to me.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good leaving it.
Okay.
What would be the difference? I mean, I know you can do it be a masseuse in your home or you can be a lawyer in your home.
What, what I would say as it's not a difference, but if someone were searching for home professional offices, they would a- as a topic, they wouldn't find it. It's, it's, so it can, it's a, it's within the text or the content within the text or home office.
I get you. Well, what if you just, your suggestion was home occupations and home professional offices?
Yes.
I would leave it just home occupations.
Okay, fine. Yep.
Okay. Number two, such use shall not require internal or external alteration or invoke construction features not customarily in a dwelling. Number three, the use is clearly incidental and secondary to the principal residential use of the premise. No storage or display of material, goods, supplies or equipment related to the use shall be visible from the exterior of the premises. No on-premise sale of goods. Okay, no on-premise sale of goods, but you're gonna have sale of services?
Yes.
Okay. That brings me back.
Can, can I ask a question about that? The no on-premise sale of goods? What if someone has an Etsy store in their home?
Has a what?
An Etsy, an Etsy store, like, you know, like an online store of some sort.
Okay.
Did they run that through their home or does this prohibit that?
Um, that's a good question.
That would be online stuff, right? It's not like somebody's gonna come in and buy things.
Yeah, still the transaction is happening in the home. Nobody's coming to the house to get it. But the transaction is still happening in the, in the home.
Let me look, let me look into that. Um, Lynn.
Okay. You know what I mean by an Etsy store, right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. You know, and eBay store would be another one.
Yes, I was. Yeah.
The cells, you know, first.
Online sales.
Yeah, we may want to just reword it.
Yeah.
Okay, number six, no person other than a member of the family residing on the premises may be the service provider in the occupation. Does it have to be a member of the family or does it have to be a? Say, you know. You're sharing a house with a friend. It's not really a family member. No person other than a resident of the, resident of the premises.
That makes sense to me.
Well, you're saying here is a member of the family residing. So if I'm residing here, my granddaughter who lives in Staten Island is covered here. They're a member of my family.
If she, if your granddaughter resides on the premises.
Okay, the member residing. Okay, I'm thinking member of the family. So other than saying member of the family, no person other than a residence of the premises because it doesn't necessarily always be a family. It could be roommates. It could be feared.
Why don't you just take family out? No person other than the people right, than someone residing in the president, in the premise.
I, I, yeah, I would hold on that. Let me look into that.
Let me insert a comment. Oops, what I do? In order to maintain the residential character of the neighborhood in which it is located, the use shall not generate excessive noise, vibration, glare, fumes, odors, delivery shipments, electrical interference or any activity that would suggest a business operation beyond what normally occurs in the applicable zoning district or which would present a hazard to public safety, health or safety. Okay. Marie, this doesn't specifically say which zones this is involved.
I've got that noted to look into it, Fran. I'll get.
Okay.
Back to you on that.
Okay, yeah, because then if this isn't a B1, not a B, yeah, B1, it would, it doesn't seem to make.
I, I think it's only R1 or R3, but I will.
That's what I'm sort of thinking. Traffic shall be limited to no more than four vehicular trips combined drop off visits, service calls, et cetera per day. Remember when you had this, the open meeting, this discussion. Is that okay with everyone?
Yep.
Okay. Parking required by 13417L should be provided on the premises off the street and other than in a required front side or rear yard setback.
Yeah, that, that, I don't approve that. I need to figure out what the R was referring to.
All right. You shall not involve pets, laboratory animals, livestock, organisms, viruses, oh goody, or the like, okay? You shall not involve the use of advertising signs vis exterior other than one non-illuminated nameplate not to exceed 144 square inches, which shall be allowed. It may display the name of the occupant or the name of the home occupation or home professional office. Can it display a phone number?
If you can fit it in 144 square inches, which is 12 by 12.
Right.
No, I take that back. No, no, that's advertising.
Okay. No permit shall be required, which for home occupation which complies with the condition set forth above, a permit shall be required for a home professional office. Do we have to define these terms or are they defined?
I, you know, I can't remember.
All right, I've got it in front of me. Hang on. That's why I printed this thing so I could.
On the surface, it seems a little contradictory, but I mean, I, I get the difference, but.
They are, they are defined, Marie.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, Fran.
A home occupation is an occupation activity or used out by the inhabitants for gain profit or financial support that is clearly its customary incidental and secondary use of a residential dwelling unit. A home professional office, professional office of a lawyer, architect, engineer, physician, surgeon, dentist, chiropractor, real estate broker, accountant, tax consultant, or other practitioner of a recognized licensed profession conducted as a secondary and incidental use of a residential dwelling unit. So for a home professional office, they need a permit. Now, is that a permit from us? Is that a permit from their profession?
It's a permit from the village.
Shall I specify that?
It's in there. Application for home professional office permit shall be made to.
Okay.
Board and shall be accompanied by a filing fee, blah, blah, blah.
Okay. Application. Do we need that word application? I guess twice. A home professional office shall be.
I would leave it in because I think it, it it assists with the understanding.
Okay. Site plan approval procedures shall apply to all applications for home professional offices. All permits shall expire one year from the date of the approval. So if you have a permit to be a dentist in your home, you have to get that every year.
Yep.
Permit renewals, okay. I'm just gonna move these over. See if I can do this without messing this up. Hey, look at that. It worked. Permit renewals. Permits may be renewed annually. Request for renewal shall be submitted and writing to the code enforcement officer accompanied by renewal fee as set forth by the village board. And the question will be reviewed and an inspection made of the property by the code enforcement officer to verify continued compliance with the necessary criteria and conditions established with the initial approval of a code enforcement officer. Upon a determination of compliance, shall renew the permit for one year. That's that, that's that, that's that. Permit revocation.
I ask a question. Can I just ask a question about number four A? Permits may be renewed annually. Does that, does that mean must be renewed annually? Because when I hear some of the parents, parents may be renewed annually means I interpret that to mean like you can do it or you don't have to.
Yeah, so Fran, can you change that to permits shall be renewed annually?
Yeah.
It says above the other permit shall expire in one year. So I guess that. Permit shall be renewed annually. Okay.
I think that's clear.
Revocation.
I felt the same way on that one I read it. Hey, you may do it.
Yeah, if you don't want to, that's okay.
Yeah, if you don't feel like it.
Lead back.
Non-com, non-compliance with the condition set forth in the permit approval shall result in the revocation and or non-renewal of any permit issued under this section. Failure of the applicant to renew the permit shall result in automatic termination of the permit. For reinstatement of an expired permit, the application must pay an initial application fee and reapply for a new permit. Live work units. Live workspace may exist on the first floor of a structure only if the appearance and use of the live workspace on the street side is consistent with the nature of the permitted uses in the surrounding area. For example, if the surrounding area is retail in nature at the first floor level, the live workspace shall be restricted to retail on the street side of the first floor and said street side shall be large enough, street side space shall be large enough in the opinion of the enforcement officer to support a typical retail enterprise. Each live workspace and its various components shall be physically separate and distinct from other live workspaces and other uses within a particular building. Sharing of liver spaces by multiple tenancies, components thereof, or utilities shall not be permitted. However, access to live workspaces may be provided from common areas, halls or corridors. Each live workspace must be individually equipped with an enclosed bathroom containing a sink, toilet, shower or tub and appropriate venting. Is this, would this have to do with the, the building next to Argentino?
Uh, no, this is MU1.
This is MU1. Does it say?
Anyone, anyone has defined the workspaces.
Oh, should we be specific about that someplace?
I believe that MU1 identifies live work.
Okay, so then, then this doesn't have to specifically say live work units parentheses MU or something to that effect.
I certainly look into that. Yeah.
You could. I'm sorry, Marie, you said yes?
I will, I will look into that.
Okay. All right, each live workspace must be individually equipped with kitchen consisting of a sink, non-portable stove, oven and refrigerator. Each live workspace must contain a gross floor area of no less than 800 square feet of which a minimum area shall be devoted to the following. 35 square feet for an enclosed bathroom, 60 square feet for a kitchen and 120 square feet for sleeping area. Um, do we want to uh, hold out on defining the gross floor area? Is that, or do you want to look into that with the Ted Fink stuff, Marie? Or is this clear?
No, no, that needs to be confirmed by, confirmed by Ted.
Okay.
Sorry.
I would flag it.
Yeah, okay.
Your change.
The whole, the whole thing.
Not the whole thing, just the gross.
The gross, okay.
Just the word.
I'm writing notes that I hope we all understand when I finish writing them.
I would flag just the next one, same thing, except, except for the wording. Two spots.
40% of the gross floor area. Sure.
The third line, there's another gross floor area, Fran.
Okay, I'm just gonna highlight them.
Yeah, I think we can accept that one, just except for the.
All right, no more than 40% direct access between living and working areas must be provided.
Fran, Fran, can you back up? I think conducted should be accepted.
Conducted, where is conducted?
You've got your, your right on top of it.
There we go. Yeah, I was trying to find the right, okay, direct access between living and working areas must be provided in order to ensure that the use is consistent with other commercial uses. Live workspaces shall not be used for classroom instructional uses with more than two pupils at one time to storage of flammable liquids or hazardous materials, welding or any open flame work. Uh, should these be commas instead of colons, Marie?
Um, I, I think that live, I think it should live workspaces shall not be used for colon.
Classroom structural uses of more than two pupils at one time, storage of flammable liquids or hazardous materials, welding or the open flame work. Okay. Further, the work in the live workspace shall be so conducted as to not cause noise, vibration, blah, 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 which is perceptible by the average person located within any other residential or commercial unit within the structure or beyond the lot lines. No more than one person who is 18 years of age or older may reside within a live workspace per 300 square feet.
This is a Ted thing question.
Yep, residential floor space. Further, not more than two persons who are at least 18, at least one of the more than two children of said persons who are under 18 years age may reside, wait a minute. Not more than two persons who are at least 18 years of age, of which at least one of whom is the business operator and the residence and not more than two children of said persons who are under 18 may reside within a live workspace on a year-round basis. That doesn't matter how big it is?
Um, well, you, you see above, it was identified the percentage of space that's given to the workspace and the live space. So that was under E. And then F identifies the, the percentage to one and the other.
Okay. Only one non-resident employee may be employed within a live workspace. This requirement may be waived for live workspaces to provide. Only one non-resident employee may be employed within a live-work space. This requirement may be waived for live-work spaces that provide retail space on the first floor. Only, other than the first floor retail-oriented area, articles offered for sale within a live-work space must include those items produced by the business operator residing in said live-work space and may be offered with other like items. Signage for live-work units shall conform to one oh four. Residential space and workspace shall not be rented separately or used by persons other than those people legally residing within the live-work space and permitted non-resident employees.
Can you, for live-work, Fran, in that, can you capitalize the L and capitalize the W?
All the workspaces shall conform to all applicable codes, including the Uniform Fire Protection Prevention and Building Code. Renewals by each live-work space shall be inspected by the code enforcement officer every two years to determine whether the live-work space remains in compliance with the section upon a satisfactory inspection report, the live-work space owner shall be reassured a certificate of occupancy for two additional years if the code enforcement officer determines that the live-work space is not in compliance. The building owner or manager shall have sixty days in which to rectify all non-complying elements and shall apply for reinspection with the building department.
Okay, so that, instead of building department, should say code enforcement officer?
Subject to an additional fee if such, all such non-complying elements are not rectified with the above specified timeframe, the certificate of occupancy for the use shall expire, and the use is authorized by the special permission terminated, the owner of the live-work space shall be, shall file a certification with the code enforcement officer every two years at any point in time when there is a change in ownership or change in the use of the space on a form provided by the code enforcement officer. Which certifies that the live-work space is in conformance with this chapter and the special use permit, and that the residential portion of the space has not been expanded beyond, there we go. I'm gonna flag this one, Marie.
I, I'm sorry, Fran, I, I've lost.
I'm sorry, we're at um, P, and the last part of P says.
G five, G five F above.
Yeah. Should I flag that?
I, I don't think so. I think G five F is correct.
Okay.
So if you back up, G five F is uh, no more than forty percent of the gross floor area.
Got you, okay. I'm sorry, got you.
So the, so the reference, so um, so and it's certain, sorry, it, it skipped. So, F, for certification, in accordance with uh, it keeps skipping on me. Right, okay, so what this is saying is that the, the intention here is not to expand or extend the um, the division, the forty percent, sixty percent of live space, workspace.
Okay.
So that, G six F is correct.
Okay, perfect. Um, and the last part of this, the deed offering plans, certificate of occupancy, and or rental agreement is appropriate for each live-work space shall contain language satisfactory to the village attorney in form and substance which states that the subject dwelling is subject to all restrictions and limitations as set forth.
Yes, before, Marie. Very good, yes.
Hey, look, I'm still awake. In said chapter, and the approval resolutions, including the requirements for a certificate certification with the code enforcement officer in accordance with uh, one thirty-four sixteen G six P, which is the owner shall file a certification with the code enforcement officer every two years. Proof of recording of the deed shall be provided to the building department within sixty days. Building department, is that okay here?
Uh, I, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get that. I, 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 probably not, I just went.
It's just above one thirty-four seventeen.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to get back up to it. Um. It keeps jumping around on me, Fran. I, if it says building department, it should say code enforcement officer.
Okay, it says proof of recording of the deed shall be provided to the, should say, code enforcement officer.
Yes, yes. Let me, I'm gonna try to get back to there.
Within sixty days.
Yes, okay. Given the time, I think this is a good point to stop.
It works for me.
Oh, you, you people are such laggards.
We'll add, we'll add two minutes to the next meeting.
Oh, let's go another hour.
So when should our next meeting be?
Tuesday.
Everybody okay with that?
I'm good with Tuesday.
And that, that would be the twenty-seventh.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, great. You guys have made fantastic progress tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask a, a favor of you guys, um, before we all sign off? Um, we're seven hundred miles away, and our dog escaped from our yard this, this morning, and our house and pet sitter is fit to be tied. He's really desperate to try to find her. Um, people have, I, we've put notices all over Facebook, but if you keep an eye out for her, I will email you Tom's telephone number. So, do you guys know what our dog looks like? She's kind of shepherdy looking. Yeah, she, uh, she's, she's kind of tawny with black markings on her face.
Can you send the picture, please, yeah?
I will, I will. And take a look on Facebook, we've been posting on locals and Phillips Town Neighbors and stuff like that, so um, you know, take a look. If you see her, um, I'll send you Tom, Tom's telephone number, just give him a call. Um, but keep your eye out for her. We're starting to get really nervous. She was gone since this morning. So, but people have seen her in the neighborhood. They've seen her in the neighborhood, so.
Okay.
Hopefully. But thank you, I really appreciate your hea- appreciate your help. Safe for driving back to find her, I don't know what else to do. So, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, safe trip back.
Have a good evening.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Enjoy.
Night, everybody.
Bye.
We adjourn?
Oh, yeah, I'll post you to adjourn.
Seven.
Second, Marie's got the second.
All in favor.
Hi.
Good night, all. Night, Michael.
Yep, night, Mike.
Hi, all.
Michael.